Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 20th, 2021 Legislative Session of the Wycomico County Council. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, and you may stand and join us if you wish. Father?
Father have heaven. God will be done in thy kingdom come. God will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us sustenance and daily bread. Give us strength and trust. You know that this trespass against us and leads temptation, but that was for evil. The kingdom come. Amen.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice.
Ms. Hurley, could you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the legislative minutes from July the 6th, 2021. Open work session minutes from May the 18th, 2021, on the public-private partnership with the Richard A. Henson Family YMCA. Open work session minutes from June 1st, 2021, on the proposed program of open space land conversion from West Metro Core Park to the Conley Mill property. Open work session minutes from June the 1st, 2021, on the process for selecting a redistricting committee.
All right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously. This time, I'd like to recognize our new county council attorney, Mr. Andrew Mitchell.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Yes, sir. Welcome. Right. Ms. Hurley?
Hi. The first item is a public hearing of Resolution Number 78-2021. This is to approve the relocation of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 2.86 acres located on lots 7 and 8 on Woodbrook Drive, Salisbury, Maryland, to an offstate mitigation bank at a ratio of 2 to 1. And we have Mr. Tyler Watson here with the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Okay. This time, I'd like to open the floor to the public hearing, a public hearing for this Resolution Number 78-2021. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? All right. This time, we're going to close the floor to the public hearing. I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 78-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 78-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 78-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
The next item for business is Resolution Number 79-2021. This is appointing a redistricting commission.
All right. I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 79-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 79-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 79-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 80-2021. This is authorizing the acting county executive to accept a grant award from the USDA Royal Business Development in the amount of $34,000 for the tourism division. And, um... Mr. Steve Miller is available if there are any questions.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 80-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 80-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 80-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next is Resolution Number 82-2021. This is making a supplemental appropriation from the contingency account to the insurance liability account in the amount of $28,000. And we have Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 82-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I think... Did she come to the table and explain for the benefit of the public?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, after the budget was struck, in the middle of June, we received a letter from the head of Legit basically stating that, and you have that attached to your packets, basically that the reinsurance market came back much higher than what they were expecting. So even though Legit itself had a good claims experience, where they helped cover their risk is through reinsurance, and the cost for reinsurance has gone up significantly. They have mitigated some of that by using some of their reserves, but they couldn't mitigate the full amount, and so they had to pass that along. Until we actually got our bill, I didn't know how much that was. We got the bill, and we had put about $70,000 higher than what 2020's expense, or 2021's expense was in the budget. We're going to be even higher than $70,000 than last year. So, the way the budget is struck, liability insurance is basically a one-line department. There is no other area to get the money from within the department, and so we're asking for the contingency fund to cover the shortfall. The shortfall is less than the 28 that I'm asking, but as we make policy changes throughout the year, new vehicles, new equipment, that kind of stuff, it does change the amount that we owe them. And so, to try to avoid having to come back to council a second time on the same issue, I've put a small amount. I can't guarantee that this will be the last time I come back on this issue, because again, it's one account, one line item, one department. That's it. So, that's the... And then, we also owe this money by July 31st to maintain our insurance coverage for the county.
So basically, you're saying we went up about $100,000. It was $70,000, and you put in 28 more?
Yes.
But not quite that much?
Correct.
But it could go higher?
It could go higher as... I mean, because in our capital plan, we have equipment that we're going to purchase this year. Now, some of that equipment is equipment that we're doing as replacements. I don't know why this keeps cutting out. I apologize. Some of this is equipment that we're doing as replacements, so that will come off our schedules from Legit, but new equipment's more expensive to insure than old equipment. So, it becomes one of those, we would expect a reduction for some of the equipment that's coming off, but we'd have an increase. And so, again, I gave ourselves a little bit of space, but I can't guarantee it's enough to make us through the year since it is July 20th.
Okay. Thank you.
So you answered my question. I was going to ask you, is there a possibility that you will be coming back in addition to the 28,000?
There is a possibility. Again, attempted to put some in there, but I didn't want to put so much in there that it's just, it's a question mark. And so, I didn't want to put so much in there that we tied it up in something that we didn't end up spending it in. So, if we need additional, I will have to come to council again.
Okay.
Is our insurance policies bid out, or do we just go with Legit every year?
Certain policies, we go with others because of the fact that Legit doesn't cover them, or we have gotten better deals. We have not, that I'm aware of, recently gone and looked. I do know that a majority of the counties and municipalities within the state of Maryland do use Legit, and in my past life with the city, it has proven to be the cheaper option.
Any more questions? Okay. All in favor of Resolution Number 82-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 82-2021 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Hitchens, thank you, Ms. Olin.
Good morning. The first item I have is Resolution 81-2021, adopting the annual audit plan for fiscal year 2022.
All right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 81-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So in your packet, there's a 14-page document, or so. It lists all the audits through. I'm not going to go through them all, but I will say, this year has been much more collaborative with the Internal Auditor's Office and the executive branch of government. A lot of input from department heads as well as employees. Over the last fiscal year, I've kept count, probably about a dozen employees have reached out just with general inquiries or concerns, which is really refreshing. That's a big difference in the way it had been in my first three years here. So with all of their input, it really allows a much more focused annual audit plan, because it's based on real experience from people that are working in the county every day, along with the audit, the external audit from PKS, which had a lot of information this year. I used that, as well as I did the annual risk assessment, which we do, or the risk assessment, which we do every other year with the support of the acting county executive. Got a lot of responses with that, much more than we had any other time we did it in the past. So I feel really great about the focus of this year's annual audit plan, in that it will be fruitful in its nature.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Hitchens?
A question I had...
Mr. Cannon.
Is the fuel audit, is that going to... Are we still tied up with the O-rings and those issues that we had before at the landfill? Do you know?
We are not. Pretty much, and you'll see the fuel audit soon. I'm finishing up on that. I did the entire year. But it's mostly as far as gasoline, which that was mostly the vehicles that were using the O-rings. Everyone is more or less on the WEX program. Some people still use the pumps at roads, but it's very few. So no, we're not having that issue, especially with the sheriff's department. They're all using WEX, so they don't have to worry about the O-rings.
Okay. I'm glad to see we're doing the grant expenditure audit, too. That's, I think that's a good use of time.
Mr. Hitchens, you mentioned not many people using the pumps at county roads, and I have seen a lot of county vehicles at different fuel stations throughout the city. Is it cheaper, or are we getting a better price, or what?
So, it's not necessarily a better price, but when you factor in, you have to factor in several things. If we're all using just the pumps at roads, if you have a deputy that's in Pittsville and they need fuel, they would have to come all the way back to roads, to Vision, to get it, which is, you can calculate the time that you're paying that deputy to drive there, plus the mileage. The cost is probably about five, if I remember correctly, and I didn't do that for this audit, but it was probably five to seven cents more. However, you're saving a lot of time as well as mileage on the cars, not having to go back to the central station every time. So it's more, it's a lot of convenience as well as tracking, because the WEX program keeps track of the mileage, which then reports back to Enterprise, which helps them with their program.
And I do like the idea of the convenience, because I would hate to see a deputy drive all the way in town, because their tanks are supposed to be full or close to full most of the time. So, thank you. Mr. Holloway, did you have a question? Any more questions or comments? Mr. Asens?
Are any of these audits new that we were planning for? I know you've, many of these, we've talked about in the past, and I didn't know if any of these are new, or...
Yeah, sure. Some of them are new. Some of them haven't been done in several years. Like, the vendor audit hasn't been done since 2014. The bid process audit, I'm not sure has ever been done. I didn't find one. Employee deductions audit, that's going to be an audit that verifies what people have signed up for as far as the benefits and things like that, to make sure that they are registered for the benefits they asked for, as well as their, the deductions are the correct amount. Miscellaneous expenditures is sort of new. I'm not sure Steve ever did that one. That's going to be going through and looking at several different line items to see what may be needed more of analysis to say, are those really categorized correctly? So office supplies, you know, if you see Lowe's, and an office supplies line, I'm going to say, what was that purchase? And so, that would be the nature of that miscellaneous expenditures. So, just off the top of my head, those are brand new, have never been done.
And just so it's said, of course, we always kind of fail to mention this, and I think it's important. Your whole position, you do this because you are specifically looking for, having you doing this is helpful to weed out any potential, well, anything that could be unnecessary, anything that could be potentially fraud or anything like that. So your position, not only do you help government be more efficient, but you are also reviewing this to make sure that we are a check on ourselves, which I think is, should be commended and very important. So, thank you again.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Asens.
I think you already addressed this, but was everything that, or almost everything that the PKS audit suggested, is that incorporated into this list of...
Yeah, just about. The only thing I didn't include that Ashley had talked about, which was more, to be honest, my idea, I talked to her about it, was the pension program. But that was, that would be too large to fit into this plan for this year.
Any more questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, Resolution Number 81-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 81-2021 passes unanimously. Mr. Hitchens?
And so, my second item is simply a hotline update on the Lighthouse employee hotline. We, this is our first year with Lighthouse. We were with Navex last year. We got a significant price break by changing vendors, but we also got a value-added service of an online portal that allows people to submit claims online instead of just by phone, which if I had to guess, I would say people are more likely to do it online, and that has shown this year. We started a hotline in February 2009, and in that time, we've gotten 61 reports. This year, we got 10 reports. With the theme of collaboration with the Executive's Office, John Posoda and Jackie Curry have become partners with me with the hotline. So we started accepting HR calls, which the executive would not allow before. In years past, if someone called with an HR complaint, they were simply told, "Sorry, we can't take it. You need to call HR." Now, employees can put anonymous complaints for HR, really it matters, which is really important, and we did actually get two last year for that. Overall, the hotline, I would say, is working better than years past, and it's been a lot more active.
Mr. Holloway?
Other complaints, what were done about them? Was there any follow-up?
Well, there are...
Action taken, or whatever?
There is follow-up. There wasn't so much action taken. I really can't get into specifics. I really tried carefully talking about it, but every call was investigated and resolved. But no call resulted in a finding that warranted bringing it before council.
Any more questions or comments for Mr. Hitchens? Mr. Hitchens, can you explain quickly how it works, just in case the public doesn't know or forgot?
Sure. So, the hotline information is right on our homepage. You can, there's a 800 number, or you can click a link to go to the website. That will allow you to submit an anonymous complaint. Depending on the nature of the complaint, it either goes to myself or the executive and HR. And then, a team is, if a team is not already, a team of three is not already put together automatically, we find a third person and basically investigate the complaint. Depending on the, the person can have a follow-up available by getting a code that's given to them by Lighthouse. They can be anonymous or not. So there can be some back and forth with a complaint if the person who put the complaint in so chooses.
And why I asked you to explain this, because there are a lot of employees that were concerned that it wasn't anonymous.
I mean, they are calling a third-party, Lighthouse, so the county never interacts directly. And they don't, especially online, I mean, you can tell for sure that, I mean, you could go to a library computer and put in a complaint, and you don't put your name, or you don't have to put any identifying information at all.
Any more questions? Ms. Ackley?
Mr. Hitchens, I have just one more quick question. So is this any Wycomico County agency that receives county funding, or is this just the county government? Like, could someone call for the Wycomico County Humane Society?
It is just...
For example?
It is just the government.
Okay.
Like, the Board of Education, for instance, has the same hotline service. So if we got something for the Board of Ed, we would forward it to them, but not investigate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, this is the introduction of, excuse me, legislative bill 2021-2, and it is a change to the, an amendment to the tax exemptions in Chapter 90 of the county code. It is an act to amend Chapter 90 of the Wycomico County Code titled Tax Exemptions to add Section 70-7 to be titled Hotel or Multi-Family Residential Development Property Tax Credit to provide a real property tax credit to hotel and multifamily residential development to encourage revitalization in Wycomico County.
All right. Need a motion to introduce legislative bill 2021-02.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make one amendment, if I can.
Yes, Mr. McCain.
I think it's appropriate time to do that before we move further. Isn't that correct, Ms. Hurley?
Sure.
The...
To amend it?
Yeah. The, what I'd like to, or to make the motion to amend would be to, it would be in the Section C, under the Credit Granted, Part B, where it talks about the upon completion each of the phase of the hotel or multifamily residential development increases the assessed value of the real property by at least 10 million. I'd like to amend that to say the development increases the assessed value or the, or the appraised market value by a real estate appraisal prepared by a certified general appraiser that was utilized by the financing entity for the specific project. The basic reason I'm saying that is Part B kind of puts it a little bit into a box solely depending on the assessment, and I think someone, when we had our last meeting, gave the example of, you know, say there's a project and they were spending $11 million, and then the assessment comes back, and the assessment's 9.9, well, they technically wouldn't qualify, even though they assumed they were going to qualify because of what they were spending. And the assessment, you don't know that until you've totally completed the project. So the appraisal option is essentially the same thing that the assessment should be doing, but, you know, there's properties that might be right on the fence. At least it gives a second option. You're just not pinched in that one box.
Right.
Is that something the city did? Did the city do the same thing, or did they lead theirs this way?
That's not in the cities. The cities is, the cities is totally on the assessment.
I'll say. Mr. Cannon?
I'll say.
Got a motion and a second. Do we vote on this now?
You can vote yes.
Okay. Voting now on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, Mr. McCain introduced, please say aye.
No.
Aye.
All right. Ms. McCain, let me do a roll call. Is that too many? Got a aye. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Holloway?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Asens?
Aye.
Ms. Ackley?
No.
And the chair votes no, but it passes. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any more discussion?
Just so it's thrown out there, I guess the other question in my mind is on that, and I defer to our esteemed colleague in appraisal business. But certainly, the $10 million threshold, is that also a project cost? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion, and I don't have any strong feelings on that, but should we not, I want to make sure that we, as Mr. McCain mentioned, that we give all, if anyone is going to go forward and try to spend, to really hit the bar on a significant project of this size, that we don't have them accidentally miss by this, by either appraised value or anything along that line. So I'm trying to think of the best way to open it up, if a project, total project cost were to help in that scenario. If not, but I'm not in that business or that realm, so I defer to Mr. McCain, but I bring it up.
Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, actually, I think the amendment we just adopted would cover that, because when a real estate appraisal is done, there's three approaches to value, and those three approaches are the cost approach, the sales comparison, and the income. So in a real estate appraisal analysis, the cost would have been part of one of the three approaches, so inherently, the cost would be addressed in that scenario. So I think that does address that, you know, issue of, you know, what's being spent.
Can I, can I raise one thing? Would your, would your motion point out which of the praise, approaches has to be used, or could you...
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be the highest.
It doesn't work that way, but...
We could put in there that McCain, you know, if you'd like, Bill. I mean, I would make that amendment, though.
I'll decline that one.
Ms. Ackley?
I just, I would like to make a motion to table this until we can have another work session. I think the points that you, that you made, Mr. McCain, are valid, and I would like to look into it a little bit more, have some more conversation around it.
Ms. Ackley offered a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, because there's some questions in this that I think we, you know, let's see. If you go down here...
I think a motion to table and second doesn't...
What's that, Mr. Cannon?
A motion and second to table doesn't allow discussion?
Oh, that's right. It doesn't.
Okay.
Okay. Yes. Okay. I'll say.
All right. Well, got a motion and a second, so we'll vote on that. All in favor of the motion to table this, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
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 Did I, Mr. Asens? All right. So the motion fails, so we can continue discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor of introducing legislative bill 2021-02, please say aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any opposed, say nay.
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 Chair votes nay. So the vote is 4 to 3. At this time, we'll have Ms. Hurley state when we can do the hearing date.
Public hearing can be held on August the 17th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. That'll be August 17th at 10:00 a.m. All right? Everybody good? All right. This time, I'll open the floor to public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to council members. Please include 10 copies and no derogatory comments, personal attacks, obscene language, or disruptive behavior. Do you have any public comments? Yes, sir. If you would, go to the podium and state your county of residence.
I do have a comment. It will take more than three minutes, but I will try to make it brief. I live in Wycomico County. I presume I don't have to give my address, right?
Just say Wycomico County.
Wycomico County. The situation is, I've seen that they're going to be talking about the shoreline and protection in Cove Road and Roaring Point, and I'm seeing that they're going from, I don't know, $350,000 to $650,000. going from, I don't know, $350,000 to $650,000. The truth is that you are not being told of everything that is going to go there. There's another section which, there are discussions of purchasing with MIMA, and they're going to be coming in the future to you to buy somebody's property to expand one of those beaches, which, as it is right now, is 11 years since there was a meeting here or somewhere. It was, they asked for a, a study to be done, how to protect that area, protect the residents in that location. Nothing has been done in 11 years. The last seven, eight years has been a total disaster. I'm constantly calling the Sheriff Department, constantly calling the parks to come and clean the mess. There are broken glasses and everything. If they want to protect, the only that has protected that beach has been me, purchasing fences to protect the erosion. All over the place, I offered to pay for railroad ties to protect the erosion of the beach. I had, but I, at 65, I cannot carry those things. I asked for help, no help was provided. I understand that they are planning to work on the parking in this location. It's going to be expanded. I can assure you that, even though they're telling me no study has been done. And that all reason the study has been done is because they don't know how much beach they're acquiring. So we're buying something, not knowing what we, what we're acquiring. And so I said, fine, I understand that. If you're not going to do a study, I'll pay you for the study. Out of my hard work money, I'll pay for the study. So it's not destroyed before it happens. And I was said, no. Number two, I said, if that's the case, where's the study to the current beach and the parking? Oh, no studies in place. I'm sorry? So no studies in place now, but you're saying in the future you will be doing something? Something's not working here. And lastly, I've been told not to follow with this thing. I was told, don't bring it up, don't bother people. You interpret what you, what that means. So the situation is, just this morning, I had pictures here of the erosion, which we all know, a picture of the trash that has been there for days. So when all this is being said, we're doing this and that, yes, a little bit is done. But the numbers that they are going to be presenting to you do not include the parking, the Sheriff Department, the security that apparently has been increased. None of that is there. So you have all the numbers, just like Nicole said, what, what somebody, the gentleman said. Let's do a study a little bit more. Let's see into this thing. But this expanding, we're talking about $1.2 million, my estimate is going to be. This is what is, it's not going to be the 658. Then there are MIMA's investing another $200,000 of this. You're going to be asked for another 200, 300, plus, plus, plus. So it's your call, guys. I hope you will do the right thing. And I do have to go, because I have to go to work, so.
Ms. Hurley, I didn't hear. Did you get his name?
No, I will give you my name. It's Gus Gregori, G-R-E-G-O-R-I.
Okay.
And I will come anytime you guys want.
I can't guarantee that we, we can do anything, because we're just a legislative body, but we'll look into it. And I, I do appreciate your concern and what you've done out there. And I certainly hope nobody from the county told you not to talk about it, because you have a right to speak, so.
Not this week. I was told not to talk to anyone. Not this week, right now, because they don't know I'm here. But the other thing is, I do understand what you're saying, but somebody went behind you guys in asking your permission to start talking to other people to secure thing. My understanding was, they need approval from you guys before they can do anything. And obviously, somebody decided to be the boss and do whatever they want.
We'll look into it, and thank you for your concern.
Sorry, don't take it.
Yeah, you're, you're fine. Thank you. Are there any more public comments? Any more public comments? Last call. All right, no public comments. This time we'll take council comments. Do we have council comments? Surely, we've got council comments? All right, no council comments. I do want to state that I and Ms. Ackley attended the National Association of Counties Conference last weekend. It was very informing, very interesting. And we did, there were a lot of opportunities to discuss broadband, which is very important, and water and sewer. So I hope that we can bring something to the table from that. So it's something that this county's working on, and I hope we can have a positive outlook with that. All right, moving on. All right, this time I need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the General Provisions Article, Section 3-305B1, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the local management board director to protect the confidentiality of the individual. I need a motion.
Sub moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, thank you. This time we're going to go into open work sessions. First work session is proposed property tax credit legislation. Mr. Councilman Joe Holloway, can you lead this?
Can I read it?
Can you lead this discussion?
Well, we brought this up at the last.
We brought this up at the last meeting, and we never reached a consensus vote. What I, you know, I would have probably, just the conversation, not brought it up again. But I see we're moving ahead with the Horizon Project, giving tax abatements, credits, whatever you want to call it, to large-scale developers. I feel if we do that, we need to also give the taxpayers of Wycomico County a break. The interesting part about that is our state delegate, Mr. Anderton, stood at the podium and said he is fully in favor of this. So if, Mr. Wilbur, can you come to the table, please?
Good morning, Mr. Wilbur. Saw you up here earlier.
So I understand you have to have.
Right, enabling.
Enabling legislation from the General Assembly to do this. So they seem to be fully on board with the Horizon issue and by passing those bills. So.
Right.
I guess we could, if the council agrees, ask them to give enabling legislation for this. What would be the process?
I think the process would be that the council, if they chose to, would make a request of the local legislative delegation at the state level to bring forward an amendment to that tax property article section, allowing the tax credit that's contained in your legislation. It's the same process as was used for the Horizon.
So would this be an amendment to the Horizon bill, or not the Horizon bill, but it'd be an amendment to their two bills, the House and Senate bill that they put forward?
No, it would be just a separate enabling piece of legislation that would put another paragraph in the property tax credits or exemptions that are authorized in the state code.
Okay.
Allowing the credit that you've described.
So what we need is a letter from the council?
Yes.
And preferably from the county executive.
Right.
Yeah, so anyway.
Before we get too far with this, because I, I thought we resolved this at our last meeting. I know we discussed this at our last meeting, and the, it was acknowledged at the meeting that there wasn't support. I guess we didn't technically go around and, and do a consensus on it. So I guess maybe, I'd just like to see us get in front of that, and just go ahead and see if there's consensus before we keep going with this, because, like I say, I thought we resolved this at the last meeting.
Right, last meeting, Ms. Hurley went and double-checked, and I think there were only two people discussing it, but there was no consensus.
Well.
And Joe, I do, or you made the comment. I went back and listened to it as well, and Mr. Holloway said, you know, there's not support for this. I acknowledge that, and we kind of moved on. I think, you know, but regardless, let's just, let's just see if there's consensus before we.
I did, but I'd like to say something else. We are allowed to discuss this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. You know, with Mr. Anderton's statements, and I see that we're moving forward. And you know, doing a little more research and looking into what the Horizon, not necessarily just the Horizon, but what the two bills, the two bills that the legislators passed, this could potentially be millions of dollars in tax abatements and tax credits to developers in Wycomico County that basically the citizens are going to have to make up to, to support the government and support services. So, you know, I say it only fair, if we're going to give a tax abatement to developers, especially large, especially large-scale developers, we're not talking about a small, small scale projects, that it's only fair that we do the same thing for the citizens of Wycomico County.
Yeah, I really hope we don't, go ahead, Ms. Cannon.
I have a question also.
Mr. Cannon?
First of all, Joe, I think you need to verify those statistics. I don't think there is going to be as such an encumbrance on any type of services as you're suggesting. But I would like to ask you, if this were to go to the legislature as a legislative bill, exactly when would this tax break come to fruition? When would it be imposed? What, what fiscal year?
The, the tax break would be, you'd have to have the state authorize and enabling legislation out of the next session.
Right.
And then legislation would be brought forward to the county council.
Right.
And then it would be effective. It would be the, let's see, the 22, 23. It looks like it'd be the 23 year.
It would be passed in the 23, but it wouldn't be signed by the governor, I don't think, until it would be effective for fiscal year 24. Once it's been approved by the legislation, signed by the governor, if it were.
Well, let's say it came into the legislative section, session in 22.
Right.
And governor signed it in 22, then the tax abatement or tax credit, I think, would be available in 23.
23.
Yeah.
So that's two years from now.
Yes.
Okay. See, here's my concern. I've said this before. Joe, we can resolve this thing, this much easier, and we don't even have to go to the state of Maryland. You could do this in the next, next budget cycle. Change the tax rate in the next, next budget cycle. That way, this would go into effect in, what, like, eight months instead of two years?
That's correct, John. We can do that. But if it's passed as a law, we would have to do it. You're saying we can do it. You know, can and having to is two different things. It's like shall and may, you know, in our, we discuss that a lot in bills we have. You shall do this or may do this. If, we can do it in the next budget session, sure.
We can.
But if we do this as a law, we have to do it. So.
Now, see, I mean, you're, you're making an assumption there. We, we haven't even seen the legislation to know exactly how it's going. It could be a shall, it could be a may. This council could vote for it to be a shall or a may. And then this, once the state, when the state legislature gets it, they could dictate whether it's going to be shall or may. The point being, Joe, is that the simplest process would be to do it in the next, next budget cycle in eight months, instead of waiting two years, no matter whether it says shall, may, or it could be.
We can still do it, but we're the ones that's going to write the letter, so we can put shall or may in it if we want to. That's, we're the ones that do the letter. And we can do it in the next budget process if we want to. But we can also do a letter to the legislators to see if they'll do this. So we can do it both ways.
Right. Well, if you can do it in eight months, why wait two years?
We don't have to wait two years, John. We can do it in eight months, but we can also do the legislation.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to repeat myself, Joe. It's just that you, you either do something and wait two years for it to pass, or you do it in eight months.
Okay. We can do it in eight months, and we can also pass this legislation that says in two years, we have to do it. So.
I would leave that up to the next council, to be quite honest with you.
Ms. Harley?
Mr. Wilbur, you mentioned fiscal year 23, but if the state legislation goes into effect in fiscal year 23, then the county would have to go through the process of adopting its legislation. So then you're in the middle of that fiscal year. Wouldn't you think that to start off the tax credit for the beginning of the next fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 24, would be the most proper thing to do? Or would you want to do the tax credit in the middle of the fiscal year?
I don't think we want to do a tax credit in the middle of any year. We'd want to start it with July 1. You know, what, what I was thinking was, much like the Horizon enabling legislation at the state, that came into effect this year, this spring. And the council is discussing putting that tax credit in place with legislation essentially in August, so it's available. Yeah, if we were, so if we were working in 22, with the state legislation, say, then that flowed into, that enabling legislation flowed into county legislation in 23, just like the Horizon, then yes, July 1, 24, looks like would be the start.
Yep.
Walking that through with you.
Can we ask for the consensus? Or Mr. Holloway's asked for the consensus. I'll ask for the consensus.
Good. Ms. Ackley, go ahead.
I just have a question. Well, two questions, actually. If, if this does not, if we can't get a consensus for this, is this something we could put on the ballot for the voters to decide?
No, this, that, that would be like an advisory legislative bill.
Okay, all right. And then the second question I had is, Mr. Holloway, did you have any kind of an economic impact study? Have you delved into this a little bit more to get some information on how this would impact services?
I had as much of an impact study done on this as we had done on the Horizon Project, and that is none.
No, it's not the case.
Any more discussion? All right, as long as the core services are fulfilled, like schools, roads, and public safety, I, I have no problem with a tax credit. But let's go ahead with a consensus to move forward with this. Mr. McCain?
None in favor.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Holloway?
I'm sure.
Mr. Cannon?
If you're looking for a tax cut for the citizens of Wycomico County, you do it in eight months. You don't do it in three years.
No.
We get that. So that's a no. Mr. Hastings?
Good thought, but no.
Ms. Ackley?
I'm not comfortable voting for something that we don't have an economic impact study on.
Yeah, I, I do want to move forward with it, but we don't have enough votes. So with that said, we'll move on. Mr. Miller, thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Next, we have the shoreline registries restoration projects for Cove Road and Roaring Point. Mr. Miller, Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism.
Good morning.
Brought the whole team, did you?
We did.
If you would, state your names, and you can move the mic towards you. State your name and your position.
Steve Miller. I'm the Director of Wycomico County Recreation Parks Tourism.
Chuck Russo, Deputy Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism.
My name is Bhaskar Nsibramunyan. I'm, I'm the Chief of Shoreline Conservation Service for Maryland Department of Natural Resources.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Dot, thank you for having us, and members of the council. Good morning. We're here to discuss two shoreline restoration projects, one at Roaring Point and one at Cove Road Beach. Back in 2018, the council approved a 0% loan from, through DNR to undertake these beach restoration projects. Since that time, or the last three years, we've been through a lengthy process in designing both of these projects. We've been through a very lengthy process in the permitting, which was delayed by COVID significantly. And then we've just recently completed the, the construction bid process. And what, the end result of, over that period of time, is that the actual costs of construction are significantly higher than what was anticipated in 2018. So it's a little more than double what, what we had anticipated when we first got approved for the 0% loan. The reason we're here today is to seek council consensus, to approach DNR and see if they would consider increasing that 0% interest loan amount, which would allow us to award the projects and to proceed with these projects. Our concern is that these beach, beaches are eroding, and we're losing those beaches. And that's why these were initiated several years ago. And our concern is if, if we don't do anything, they're not going to fix themselves, and eventually, we're going to lose those beaches, which, which are assets to the county. In terms of the budget impact, there would be no budget impact in this current fiscal year. The way the loan agreement works is that the loan repayment starts the fiscal year after the project is done. So in theory, if we were able to complete the project this year, our first payment would be due next July. So this would impact the FY23 budget and beyond. But there would be no impact to this current budget. So that, that is a, a real quick thumbnail of, of why we're here. Chuck Russo was our project manager, so he's here, Bhaskar from DNR, who administers the, the loan program, could answer questions on, in that regard. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You have any questions, council?
Pam, all in, all in favor of saving the beach. There's no problem there, but how can you ask us for a consensus for something that you can't tell us what it's going to cost us in the future?
Well, we do, we do have a price on the project. So we just completed the construction bids, and that's the point. We don't, we don't have enough funding to award the project. So what we're seeking consensus on is if, if we go to DNR and go to the governor and Board of Public Works to say they will increase the amount, that you all would be in favor of that, so that we could award the projects and complete it. So we do have a number.
But I mean, what, you say it's not going to impact our budget this year. How about future budgets?
It will.
Yeah. So do you know what that number is?
It would be roughly double annually. So I think it was, Bhaskar, it was about 16 per year. It would go up to, go ahead.
Yeah, I have the numbers, actually. What we did was, you know, we had the number based on estimate, and that's how we do the, do these, these projects all the time. Like Steve mentioned, the, you know, because of COVID and other things, the numbers have actually gone up. All the numbers, all the construction numbers have gone up. And so we, we've done the cost estimate of what it's going to be after the project is done with the new, if, if this project is going to go forward, both of these projects, if they decide to go forward, then we have an estimate of, you know, instead of 16, 16,000 and odd, it'll probably be 37,000 annual repayment from the county.
From the county, 37,000 a year. And that would start in, what, '23?
'23.
If, if we finish the project this year.
Uh-huh, okay. What, what were you saying about it doubling?
The loan repayment amount in the fiscal year. So like Bhaskar said, originally, the schedule would be FY23. $16,000 loan repayment would be 37, so it'd be more than double an annual payment.
So more than doubled?
Correct. Correct, but it is a 0% interest loan.
Okay.
But yes, that payment would increase.
So the, the thought on the restoration, is it going to be just shoreline? Or is it going to be beach replenishment like we see in Ocean City?
Bhaskar, you can go ahead.
So I, I would not call it beach replenishment. This, the project is definitely going to enhance the beach. It's probably going to grow at least 50, 50 feet into the water. So it is definitely going to be a bigger beach. It's not going to be the next Ocean City of.
Yeah, I get that.
But it is definitely going to be a substantial beach on both.
But I was just wondering if you were just going to put the shoreline protection up where it stands? Or are you going to rebuild the beach?
So what's going to happen is again, like I said, it's going to be 50 feet at least. There's going to be a structure out there, a rock structure to actually, you know, break the wave energy. Because wave energy is what's causing the erosion to the greatest extent. And so you definitely are going to have structure there and then backfill with sand.
Can you address any of the comments our citizen had?
I quite honestly don't know where to start. We've, we've made significant efforts out there. We understand that there are issues related to the amount of foot traffic and vehicular traffic. But those are small beaches and there's a high demand for those beaches. We've increased our labor out there. We've made many efforts to address and I think we're moving in the right direction. So I think that's how I'll leave it for now.
This is probably, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Ackley.
So I guess that was just back to the citizens. The citizens' comment is increasing the beach, you are going to have, you're going to have an increase in people visiting the beach. So how is this going to look overall for the county as far as maintenance, as far as police service? Have we, have you gone that far in the planning piece? Or are you still just at the shoreline?
Yeah, I think these are two totally separate topics. I mean, what we're here to do is to protect what we're losing every year. We continue to lose more and more beach and we want to stop that, protect the beach that we have. As far as future plans and other types of expansions, that, those are. I mean, obviously be related, there's operational considerations that would have to be undertaken. Those are all unanswered questions at this point. But I think what we're, what we're here to do now is we've got a project award for these to protect the existing shoreline. These have been issues for a long, long time. We've not been able to bid them out because we don't have the funding and that, and that's what we're seeking through DNR, through the 0% loan program to see if we can move these forward.
And then very last thing, Mr. Miller. So I was looking back through the previous notes in 2018 and you, there was approval to do this, correct? At that point, okay.
Yes.
My question actually was more of a technical question, just out of, more out of curiosity. When those stone structures are put in place, is there some expectation that naturally it'll start to build back now that you don't get the wave actions to erode those shorelines? I mean, I know you were stating that they'd have to put the sand behind it. But do we expect to get some natural regeneration as well since it's no longer, you know, washing out?
Are you on record?
I am.
We're on the record. We're live.
Yeah, right. So the way the structures have been designed is to actually help with natural accretion. If you ask, is there sand movement there at both of those beaches? The answer is yes. Are these going to actually help? They might, because like I said, these structures are not closed. They are open structures for, for room to actually, you know, let for natural accretion. We've done similar design projects in other, other places where there is very similar situation in terms of natural sand movement and all of them. And most of these projects, we've seen accretion.
All right. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Will there be any expansion of the size of the beach by doing this from where it is now?
I would say for this project, if anything, it'd be width, correct? I mean, in terms of.
I would say, yeah, it's, it's going to go into the water at least 50 feet.
Deep.
Yeah, then the beach is going to become a lot bigger.
We're going to have a lot larger beach, which means a lot more people.
Yeah, and one of, one of the issues at both beaches is less so the beach is for, there's limited parking for the beach that you have. So when you run out of parking, which we do every weekend in the summertime, you run out of parking. So I don't necessarily think if, if we can control the parking, and that's what we're going through now, is we've increased the manpower at both beaches for the summer. We're experimenting and we're investing in, in additional manpower on Saturdays and Sundays. We're trying to evaluate if that can help address the issues with parking. And if we can address it that way, then we can better plan in the future for what kind of manpower we need down there. But, but parking is your bigger, bigger issue at both sites.
We increased the size of the parking.
We haven't and there, there's no current plan to, I think that's an open question.
Right.
I mean, saving the beach and putting the beach back and making it larger is great. But if you're going to increase your problems with parking, I mean, you know, I know what we went through with the civic center. You know, we, we talked about how much more parking we needed because we had more people. I mean, it only makes sense. Why isn't there a plan in place to, to alleviate the parking problem? I mean, I understand saving the beach, all for it, okay? But you're being short sighted by, you know, you're just creating more problems for the, for the residents that do live down there. So.
Well, I think, I think your parking issue is just more of a, that opportunity has got to present itself. I mean, that road's fairly narrow and there's people own homes along it. I mean, maybe somewhere in the future, yeah, the opportunity might come where one of those lots or those homes come available, you know, that maybe the county could acquire for parking. But until that opportunity presents it, I'm not sure what else you can do with that road there.
Yeah, I think our options are at this moment in time, they're, they're limited. It's something we have looked at. I don't know that there's an easy solution at this point in time. But I think, I think what we're seeing is, and it manifests itself in a number of ways. What we're seeing is the demand exceeds the space that we have. And I think what, what this project is, I think a lot of those questions again are for another day. But I think what we're trying to do is not lose two assets that we have. We don't want these beaches to continue to erode where we lose public access. So that's our initial concern and I think these future questions, we're, we're trying to answer those questions as we speak.
I'd rather not, I'd rather not be told what days I should ask questions. But anyway, Mr. Miller, I mean, we've got a problem with neighbors down there complaining about people throwing trash, parking in their parking, in their driveways, parking in their yards. And you're trying to expand the beach, which is great to save a beach. I don't want anybody to think that I don't like beaches. I do. But you're not addressing the problem of parking when you're trying, you're saying that you're going to make the beach larger, which is going to be a lot more people. So does this parking problem move from just on Cove Road out on to, was it 349? Do we start having parking problems out there? I mean, you're not, you're not looking at the problem fully. You're just looking at one part of the problem.
And I get what you're saying, Mr. Holloway. I think what we're maybe looking for is a comprehensive plan of what we're going to do with this project. And I see this as the first step with, with preserving the beach. But before we start investing this, the money in the beach, what's the whole project going to look like? And I don't know if maybe you can come back and give us more of a, more of a comprehensive plan, long term, what we're going to look at. That might be something that would sit better.
But the issue on hand right now is talking about moving forward with the beach restoration. And I think everybody agrees with that. Are you willing to come back for another work session? Because I know Mr. Holloway and Ms. Ackley brought up some good points.
Yes.
I think sooner than later, if, if you are willing to come forward.
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a consensus?
I'd like to make one comment here, yeah. And obviously the beach has to be expanded. You have to do this. We recognize the fact that the citizens of Wycomico County find these beaches very valuable. It's a completely different subject as far as parking and maybe limiting, I don't know if you could limit attendance. But I think yes, without question, we need to move forward and get this beach expanded. I don't want to micromanage what you all do because you recognize the problem and you're here to try to solve that problem. So I'm in favor of that.
And I don't, I don't want to actually talk out of turn. Can I, can I address one?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
So, so the reason I'm here is, so my program has the money to actually, you know, if the loan is increased, we have the money to actually increase it. I have to actually take it to the Board of Public Works, the Governor's Controller and the Treasurer, and ask them to actually increase the loan. So I'm trying to actually get from you to see whether is that something that the county wants to do? Because I don't want to actually go to the governor and say, you want the money? And then the council doesn't agree on it, right? It's going to put me in a really.
And that's why we're trying to get a consensus now. Is there any more discussion before I ask for a consensus?
And Mr. Miller, when I, when I talk about a comprehensive plan, I guess I'm thinking back to the West Metro, which was before all of us. And we bought this property, we paid for an engineer study and then nothing ever happened. So I just don't want to get into another situation like that where we're restoring the beach, we're doing, investing the money in that, but then we don't take it to the next level and those problems still exist. But as long as you're open to coming up with something strategically to attack that, I think it's, I appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, understood. And Chuck and you've got, go ahead.
Just, just one thing. I think there's a misconception that the entire beach, say, at Roaring Point is going to be expanded by 50 feet. It's a protection program to protect the shoreline. And it's really only the 330, 350 feet as you come onto Roaring Point. So you're not really expanding where infrastructure, parking and all that is going to get impacted. That's where the nor'easters and, and hurricanes have wrapped around and really done the damage to that property. The other thing would be at Cove Beach, already at a high tide level, you really don't have a beach. People are forced off the beach at high tide. There's probably four to five feet of beach. It's protecting and restoring that, that property. So you really shouldn't have parking issues that you're mentioning, Mr. Holloway, and some of those things. It's getting it back to where the state that it's protected and usable by the citizens. At some point, these aren't going to be usable properties in those areas, but it's not a full restoration at Roaring. I, I know. I've been to Cove Beach. I've seen how it is. And you say we shouldn't have parking issues.
There are.
There are already parking issues, you know? Said we've had to call the police down there. So there's already parking issues.
Sure.
Right. And I'll, I'll add one other thing. There, there's a number of spinoffs, but when we lose the beach, as Chuck said, at high tide, you may have 10 feet or less of beach. One of the results of that is that people then end up migrating because you lose your beach. They end up migrating down the beach, which is on private property. Then they get back to the parking lot. You're trespassing on private property and dealing with other issues. So having more beach, being able to control the parking, we feel like in the, over the last few weeks, we've taken significant steps in improving the conditions down there. And again, we're evaluating that as we speak. At the end of the summer, we want to evaluate, get feedback from the neighbors. So it's not an easy fix, but, but we feel like this is an important project.
Steve, the, on asset tag, on the over sand vehicle permits, they limit how many people go on and off the beach. Have you ever explored that?
Not in a serious way. We've, we've talked about a lot of potential options. You have those types of things that would take manpower or some, some type of automated fence or gate type thing. There are places that do paid parking. There, there's a lot of different ways you can deal with that stuff. So what we're trying to do again is the current plan right now this summer is we've increased the manpower. We're trying to see if we can better control it through manpower, evaluate that and then see where we go from there.
Right. As far as the parking, I, I don't like this idea. But Acuama County has required all their residents to have a parking permit if they park in these parking spaces for docks and loading zones. All right.
May I, may I raise one question?
Mr. Mitchell.
Lev and I were just looking at this and you said how much the repayment is, but the loans are two different numbers of years. Is the council aware of how long it runs out and when or if it diminishes when the one's paid off?
So the Roaring Point, you're right, absolutely right. The Roaring Point is a 20-year loan and Cove Beach is a 15-year loan and zero interest.
So it's two different loans?
Yeah.
It's in our brief books.
Yeah. Do we want to move forward with this? Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Hastings?
Most definitely.
Ms. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway? Chairboos, yes. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll set up another time to talk about the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, next we have Senate Bill 762, the Maryland Electricians Act. Master Electricians, Mr. Paul Wilbur, county attorney, Mr. Robert Simmons, President of the Board of Electrical Examiners.
Paul Wilbur and Rob Simmons is Chairman of the Electrical Board. And Donald Tribek is a member of the Electrical Board. And they're both licensed electricians in Wycomico County.
Yes, sir.
The masters or general?
We're both masters.
Both masters, yeah.
All right. Who wants to start, Mr. Wilbur?
Let me give an overview and then if you two would like to add, please feel free to add. The reason we're here is because the state of Maryland passed legislation this last legislative session that essentially takes over licensing of electricians in the entire state. What we have in our county code and has been there since 1967 is a local electrical board that issues local licenses, Wycomico County licenses to electricians. What has resulted from this, and I'm going to try to just summarize it and you can give more detail. But we are going to have to rewrite our local electrical code when the dust clears and settles on what this state legislation means. And I'll, I'll just try to hit on some of the situations that have arisen. This state law was developed, I gather, over a number of years, but by a, a small work group. Our local electrical board tried to find out about it and get input in it and were largely just not communicated with. So an electrical, a state electrical licensing law was passed. Governor Hogan did not sign it, but he did not veto it. So it became, you might say, the law on June 1, effective for July 1 of this year. That resulted in what I can only call a major scramble on the local electricians. Because in the state law, there's, there's three licenses you can get. You can get a state master, a state journey or a state apprentice. Under the Wycomico County Code, that's been in effect since 67, you can have a Wycomico master, a Wycomico general or a Wycomico limited. So what we have is two pieces of legislation and they match up about like this.
That doesn't match up real well.
No.
And it gets worse.
And it's, it's really been a major lift by the electrical board and their staff person, Amanda Rodriguez, who's, they, they've really worked hard on trying to keep our local electricians licensed and operating. We've had some Zoom calls with the state electrical board and to try to get some clarification on the transition between this new state law and our current county situation. We do not want to have our local electricians put in a position where they cannot work or they cannot bid because they are not properly licensed. The, the state law has some transition provisions in it, but not nearly enough. And so it's just a lot of gray area right now that electricians, really in the five counties that have local electrical boards, which are Wycomico, Somerset, Worcester, Talbot.
Talbot did away with their general license, so they're kind of, but Dorchester.
Okay, and Dorchester.
Dorchester, Somerset, Wycomico, Worcester. And I think Talbot was.
Talbot was in it.
Well, they still have a local board. All the counties on the eastern shore have a local board.
Okay. So we have a real, a lot of questions about how to transition our local electricians. Most of our local electricians are generals. Would that be accurate?
Before July 1, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't say most.
One of the things we're trying to do is have our generals apply before July 1 to become state masters. That's, that's, that's a big push.
July 1 of which year?
This year. They, there was a big paperwork push to get the information to the state so we can try to move them into that category. But another issue that's in the state law is they require for these state licenses a certain amount of experience and testing. is they require for these state licenses a certain amount of experience and testing. So one of the issues that's come up is, say, someone who has been a general in Wycomico for 25 years and is very experienced and a very good electrician, may have to take a test, and not everybody is the greatest written test taker.
And I've got something to touch on that when we get to that point.
Okay, you can go to that. Another facet of this state law is that they want all discipline actions reported to the state, and if there's going to be suspensions or revocations, they will be handled at the state level. We will not be able to handle them locally. One of the practical problems we see is currently the state board is, what, three or four people up there?
I think it's seven.
Seven.
I'm going to look at the numbers.
The point is that there's literally throughout the state, thousands.
Well, it's seven on paper, but not, there's vacant.
Yeah, there's vacancies. Just staffing at the state level to actually process all of the electricians' licenses for the whole state. So we've really been working, the electrical board's been working hard on trying to figure this all out. Ultimately, we will be back to you when we'll say the smoke clears. We have been in contact with the Lower Shore delegation. We're trying to get them to bring amendments to the next legislative session so that we can answer some of these questions that are in place. So that's like an overview. Rob has worked extensively with this, and I'm sure he'll have some things to say.
Okay, so one of the first things to touch on, I mean, to sum it up, this bill was passed with really zero input from the local boards, from us, from the guys in the field, guys, girls in the field. And they pushed it through under the guise of COVID, which they also pushed it through because it was virtual meetings, nobody could be able to attend, object, or whatever. And they recognize that. There would have been major pushback. But anyhow, one of the things, I've been talking to our state senator, Mayor Beth Crowe, I've been talking to Johnny Mouts, his delegate, I'm not sure if he covers the northern part of our district or not, but Ms. Eckhart and Carl Anderton, to say the least. And one of the things they came to us with was like, let's make a list of what's wrong with the bill, and we're going to narrow it down to like three things and see if we can try to get it passed. We're not going to get it repealed, because it passed unanimously in the Senate. So that's out the window, even though we would like for it to be repealed. The first thing I want to touch on is the general electricians. So in this county, we have, between general and limited, we have 120 individuals. That's 120 businesses, that's 120 employers. Multiply that by employees, families, and everything else that are being supported. Doing work, this bill essentially, if we did nothing but them out of business, they would be no longer required to operate. When we brought this up to the state, the state actually said, the state does not revolve around the southern counties on the Lower Shore. And that came out of the state delegate's mouth.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Did you say it passed unanimously?
In the Senate, yes, sir.
So our local delegation passed this?
Yes.
Voted for it?
It is my belief that they didn't know everything that was going to go with this bill. They were sold, and so they told us it was up to us to fix the problem, what they called our problem. It was our fault because we gave these people these licenses. But, so what we did, with major reluctance, is the only way that we saw fit to keep all these people in business and operating is we made a criteria, if they had seven years in the trade, that would actually make them eligible to test for a master. At this point, we really didn't have no choice. As long as they had seven years, we made them master electricians. So we kept them in business. None of us are real happy with that, because we all put in our time to become master electricians. We all took the exams, we passed the exams and showed that we were competent in our abilities. So that's the first thing that kind of stuck with us. Through this, we have developed a pretty good partnership with the three lower counties, one I don't think we've ever had since I've been on the board and from looking back. Like, we have communication with Worcester and Somerset, like, they've been attending our electrical board meetings, so we can all be on the same page and try to move forward, you know, many hands lighter than work. So we've got that under control. Well, I wouldn't say under control, but that is one thing that we're working on. Two, the three state licenses that they're referring to, the journeyman, the master, and the apprentice. So the state made these regulations, but they pretty much come right out and said, they're not going to be showing up on our job slate, they're putting that back in our lap, and said that they would rely on county inspectors. I informed them, we don't have county inspectors, we have third-party electrical inspectors. So take that for what you will. But one of the things they, for the journeyman, so I actually brought it up on Zoom with director of DLLR, Robin Bailey, this whole bunch of people, and they were talking about the, with the journeyman, I said, okay, I said, I thought there was a provision in there so we could waive the time waiver. If they have what would be equivalent to 8,000 hours, which basically is four years, that they shouldn't have to sit for an exam. I said, people are, have been in this trade for 10, 15, 20, 30 years, they shouldn't have to test to continue doing what they're doing. I mean, I think they're competent. I said, you know, workforce is hard as it is right now, we can't find help, ask any electrician, jobs are out there, job postings, nobody's applying. And so now we're going to take the workforce that we have and require them to test to keep their job. I think that's absurd. So that is one of the top things that, with delegates and senators that I've spoke to, that they're going to work so that when they get back to session, they can try to pass that through. Second, permits. So under the current language that this bill's written with, it says that a person doesn't have to have a county registration to pull a permit. You know, we can't give county licenses, but we can give county registrations. They denied, they said, that's not it, we're not trying to take any county registrations, we're not trying to take money from anybody. When I brought the point up, they didn't listen to me. When Worcester County's attorney spoke up and told them that he's the attorney, they listened to him, and he said, no, you're wrong, the language in there says "or." So basically, somebody from Baltimore or wherever can come here, and we can say, well, you've got to have a Wycomico County registration. I'll say, no, we don't. Give us a permit. By this law, you have to give us a permit. They said that wasn't the intention, but the language is there. So we want to change that. I don't know how far that'll go, because the whole purpose of this bill was to have statewide licensure, so you wouldn't have, couldn't be denied a registration.
I was going to say, yeah, how much luck are you going to have with that? This is a state.
Exactly.
State law, yeah, that's going to be a challenge.
Yes, right. So they're going to bring it up for discussion to find out. And with that, you know, our permits are $25, our licenses are $100. So now we don't have all these people that have county licenses, that money's gone. So do we raise permit fees? What do we do? You know, we're trying to figure out for that.
Where did the money for the fees go?
The fees for the permits or for the?
For your licensing fees?
I'm not sure. Do you know, Mr. Wilber?
To go to the county?
It comes back to the general fund.
It goes to the general budget.
Yeah, I think in the general fund, but 100%.
I didn't know if it went to your board or not.
Mr. Wilber, is it possible to get enabling state legislation for Wycomico to be exempt from this? Or is that just a total outreach?
I don't think that will fly, no. The state wants to take over the licensing of all electricians in the state.
Have you ever tried to call up there? Because I have.
Yeah.
Yes, we have all tried to call up there. Communication is not great.
The only time I get a communication is when I make a request through a state delegate or a state senator, and they'll actually make a meeting, and their hand is then forced. But if I call, I don't get a return call. I sent an email to Ms. Bailey on April 28th, still waiting for that response.
The issue is here that you want to get your, these folks to work so they can work. So did you say you have made so many of the generals?
Made a blanket pass.
So you made a blanket pass. Now you've got, how many that didn't have that seven years in, how many are out there now that can't pull permits?
I believe it's only two.
It's only two.
Yeah.
Now, can they pull a permit through a master?
Touchy subject. The way we view it, or the way I view it, and the consensus has been, I don't want to speak for Mr. Tribek either, but if the master pulls a permit, the master takes the responsibility.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
It does kind of skirt some things, but the short answer is, yes, a master can, if they so desire.
Can you just give us a little, an update on what is the difference between a master and a general?
A master electrician is somebody who?
What can they do, or what they're licensed to?
Pretty much anything and everything that has to do with electricity, whether it's high voltage, low voltage. And when we're talking high voltage, I was Mr. Tribek speaker next, because he does a lot more than I do. But anything electrical, that's as far as doing schools, plants, whatever. It's easier to actually describe what the general, what it was before. So a general license holder was more limited to homes when it was established, you know. It's more affordable, they don't have to charge as much. And the general license holder can do any residential work.
Okay.
And can do commercial work, I think three-phase up to 100 amps. Is that correct?
Okay.
A general can do some commercial, but I know they can do?
No three-phase.
No three-phase?
All single-phase.
Single-phase up to 100 amps. I know that there's a?
200.
200, okay. I knew there was a cause there, and I couldn't remember.
Thank you.
So that's where it is, and a master can do everything else.
So, Mr. Simmons, you stated that there's about 120 generals in Wycomico County?
Yes, sir.
Are there people working under him, or them, that don't have a license, that are electricians?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the way it stands now, and what they're trying to do with the, they want every person licensed. Delaware does the same thing. And you have to have, like, a journey person or a apprentice card. I kind of like it, you know, because it keeps, makes, in my opinion, kind of gives a level playing field. You just can't go hire laborers to go do the job. But there are catches with that. And, you know, Mr. Tribek probably speak on that more, because his company's larger, and he does have employees in Delaware, that work Delaware, that have the journeyman and apprentice.
Yeah, our company right now is, we have approximately 20 electricians, and I don't have enough people to do all my work now. I mean, I'm so far behind on everything. And another, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we're struggling with manpower, and this is actually going to, it's real touchy how you do it, because you can't become apprentice unless you're signed up for a class. You can't sign up for a class till July 1. Classes start September or end of August. So you can't sign up for another class until July 1 again for the next year. So if I hire somebody new, I've got to do one of two things. Not work them or have them sweep. It's the only thing they're allowed to do on my jobs. So, because I can't, and then I got to decide whether or not they're going to be a good employee to pay the money. Now Delaware, going through Delaware and taking them with Sussex Tech, I pay, if they're not through the state, because I can only have so many through the state according to how many generals and how many, or how many journeyman and how many master electricians I have. I can only do so much. But I pay $100 if I can do them through the state. If not, I pay between $700 and $800, I don't know the exact number. Now, if I do it through Maryland, I got to join a group to get a discount and pay $2,400 a year. I mean, yeah, Delaware's at $700 a year, not a month, but I got to pay $2,400 a year. Or if I don't join this group, I pay $3,600 a year for every employee I decide to hire, whether they're going to be good or not good. So obviously, I got to make them sign contracts. If they become not good and I have to let them go, or they decide to quit, then they got to pay me back the $3,600, which I'm never going to get.
Good luck.
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
So where are they getting the training?
Right now, there's none in Wycomico County, and when I talk?
You said they signed up, what, July 1?
Oh, right now, all my people go through Delaware, Sussex Tech. And as long as Maryland will still do that, I will pay $700 all day long for my guys to be able to do that.
Are all the classes in the classroom in person, or anything online?
Last year, everything was online. Hopefully, they'll be back this year. Now, most of my guys, they didn't even learn anything. They learn more on the job than they do in the class. So I kind of feel like I'm throwing my money in the trash can by sending them there. But I got to do what I got to do. So it's a big money thing, and for smaller companies that don't have many employees, I mean, to have to pay that much kind of money for every employee, I mean, their customers are going to have to eat that cost because they can't eat it themselves. So it's just going to be a big thing on smaller companies, and it's going to hurt them. Companies like mine, we can put it back to our customers without much trouble, because we have, we do a lot more business per year. I mean, we do millions of dollars a year. We don't make millions, but we do millions.
Are we getting electricians through our CTE program?
Interesting you bring that up. Mr. McIntyre asked me, John McIntyre is the other, he's the vice president, his daughter Tara is a principal at Parkside.
Yes.
And she's running the CTE program. And John actually asked me to specifically address the council to see what we need to do to have that funding, whether it's to go to Warwick, establish a program at Warwick.
And that was my next question, because Dr. Hoard would be quick to do that.
We need something here on the shore.
We do.
With our area, you know, people will come to Salisbury, they come to Salisbury for everything else. And then establishing something like that at Warwick, you know, having this program that meets the state standards, and pretty much a state-like testing, it's an organization called MULIC. I can't remember what that mnemonic stands for, but they write all the tests, and they're the ones who approve the tests. So they're the ones that we would have probably asked for the curriculum. What we don't want is a union school set up here, not because we don't, I don't like the union, that's not it at all, but I want a fair shot. You know, if a union school is set up here, it's going to be union-influenced, and, you know, that's workforce that's going to go out. And then if we start having that, that's, the big thing with this bill was pushed by the union. All those licenses are at different union levels. Union's great in other areas, it really is. I mean, you can make great living off of it. But over here, we can't afford to pay, union pay, to our employees because we would have to charge enormous rates, and it just wouldn't work.
I talked to Warwick before the bill actually came, when we first found out about it, because we were struggling and trying to go in every direction. So I actually talked to, I can't remember her name now, with Warwick, and they have a union class there now, but they, she said it's going to take three years to set up a non-union class. They're in the process of building a new CTE building, a new, but, yeah, it's three years. Right now, I think Chesapeake has something, but I'm not positive about that.
We shouldn't have to go that far.
Are you saying Warwick has a union electricians class?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
That's what she told me. They have set up one through the union at Warwick.
See, and the Board of Ed actually, I said it had nothing to do with what we're talking about today, but the Board of Ed actually dropped the plumbing classes at CTE, you know, so they're not even teaching plumbers anymore.
Why is that?
They didn't have the participation?
Lack of interest.
There wasn't an interest?
Well, every year, at the summertime, we do a lot of work with the Board of Ed, and we and we try to hire CTE kids out of electrical. The first year we, we did it, we had ten kids. Last year, I think we were down to, I think it was four, and this year I got one.
So, they have, they do have an electrical class?
They still do. And I, I, I mean, we tried to hire them on, tried to keep them on. I have one kid from there, is the greatest employee I have. Hard work shows up seven days a week, uh, call, ask when he needs time's off. But, yeah, I just can't, I just can't get them off, from them anymore. I don't know what they're going and doing, um, but.
Any more questions or comments, Mr. Hastings?
I would just say, first of all, why, you say there's only four counties left that have a local board? Is that right?
No, we're talking about the local, on the shore.
Yeah.
Um, I do know that, I think Garrett, and then I was told, I believe, Montgomery actually just dropped their local board. They said, let the state handle it. Garrett, I could see, you know, Western County, um, but Montgomery was a shock.
Did Mako, do Maryland County, do they actually support this bill, do you know, or they?
I do not know.
Charlie, do you remember?
I don't remember being discussed.
I don't either. Is that, the Maryland Association of Counties, we, um, met during the session via Zoom, but there's always bills, there are so many bills, but they only pick and choose certain ones that, um, they ask if we want to support or oppose, so.
Yeah.
But I don't remember this one coming in front of us.
I was just guessing, my, my next question then would be what, uh, so what are, where do we go from here? We got, it sounds like you've got some ideas that, uh, to take to the, to the state to be able to make some potential legislative fixes there? Um, and then what do we need to do internally?
Yeah, what we're trying to do is obviously give you a briefing as to the situation that we have. This is mainly a push to the lower shore delegation about this state law. Uh, and ultimately, once, as I say, the dust settles, we will be back with a new code section for the county. And, you know, one option, and we've got to all discuss this, is not to have an electrical board down here. But then the other is, we have to have, if we have an electrical board, it's going to be fit within that state law, which will be a big change.
Well, I'm glad to see that you got the people back working through.
Yeah, we, that was our number one.
What you did. Uh, I don't know about the other two, are they not inter, or do they have to put in more hours, or?
They have to put in more hours.
Yeah, so, okay, so they'll get that done. As far as having a local electrical board, I think it would, whether you want to or not, I think it would help to have some kind of representation for your group. I won't call it, you know, it's not a union group, but I'm, what I'm saying is a group of electricians. I know people always have questions, and something like this could come up again in two or three years where you all need organizations, so that's, that's, I think having a, a board would, would be advantageous, so.
Now, one of the other concerns I have with the bill is I feel like, even though they're going to the point of doing master, journeyman, general, and they're trying to get us on the same page, they actually have not even worried about the smaller, limited license HVAC people, they can still do electrical work, and they're not even caring about them, and they're not, they're not even part of it.
Yes.
So.
And that's the thing that was kind of concerning. When we looked at the work group that was created to study this bill, um, the low voltage and your solar contractors got in on it, and they actually, um, largely outnumbered the actual people, the high voltage or regular electric, electrical workers, electric, electricians in this work group. And when the members of the work group, we're talking about members from Hewlett Packard, Comcast, um, I think Verizon was on there, there's a bunch of low voltage, big companies that come in and push them their influence. And the state's not going to touch low voltage guys. Said they're going to leave them alone until like twenty twenty-four, I believe. We asked us, when they said they weren't going to touch the low voltage contractors, I raised a question, and I've asked this three or four times in the Zooms and also in person at the meeting at the Union Hall in Baltimore. I asked what the state's definition of low voltage is. They told me they do not have one. So, we could actually just say, well, we're low voltage contractors. The issue that we have with the low voltage guys, I don't mind they're doing their job, but when you have these, the system integrators, like your home theater guys, um, and alarm companies and things like that, they're still performing electrical work. They're still tying into the systems, they're still doing work that needs to be, it needs to be inspected, is where I'm getting. And it seems like they're running around with no govern, governance at all.
Isn't that where the majority of the electrical fires are, with alarms and low voltage?
Can't speak on that, I don't know.
But in, in our current legislation, we have a limited license which covers low voltage people. So, we were regulating in Wycomico, but now the state, they didn't touch it, low voltage.
They said it's up to you.
You'll still be regulating them, correct, locally?
We want, we're going to try.
That's to be determined, yeah.
Well, if they didn't intentionally, I mean, the state will obviously supersedes, but if they didn't intentionally write it out, then theoretically, yeah, whatever we additional, we put on, we should, we should still be good.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of the questions we really had, whether or not we could or can't, because we're like, do we, do we do it or not do it? And then we really want to because we feel like, we, we don't like the way it's set up. We don't feel like it's really being governed properly. The, the setup's not done the way it needs to be done. There needs to be a little bit more levels of what, what's going on. When they push that thing through, they just pushed it through just to get it through. There's no details. I can't even, I can't even go online right now and register any of my employees as a journeyman or apprentice. It's not available. I don't know when it's going to be available. It's law, and I'm supposed to be doing it, but I can't have them. So, it's, it's just really, I'm sorry, this is really upsets me that they're doing this and they don't have no layout or no, no idea what they were going to do or how they were going to do it before they made it a law.
Welcome to the government.
So, what happens? What happens if our local electrical board, um, decides to, um, withdraw or dissolve? What happens to Wycomico County?
Well, then, all the licenses or state licenses and the state electrical board would have disciplinary control, testing control, everything.
Everything would go through the state then?
Yes, which that's what they want.
Right, and what they want, I don't think they want to dissolve the board because they want us to do the legwork.
Right.
They want us, when it comes to the complaints, they want us to investigate it. You know, we're supposed to be the police, but we're not going to be the prosecutors when it comes down for, uh, when a complaint's brought before us. Okay, we found this, we found the complaint to be valid, and then we just send it up to the state. One of the things I have suggested, um, so we can have some control over it, because we do have total control over our permits, whether they're issue, you know, issuance and all that, is if somebody has a complaint, they do not get their final inspection or whatever until that complaint is handled, which will then push the, put the ball back on the state. So, when the contractors come to us and say, we need to be able to get this final inspection or what have you, so we can get paid, we can tell them, look, it's at the state, you need to call them. It's, and I don't know how we can word that or not, but it would be the only thing that we could do.
What happens with the customer who's out there, say, with a home or a business who's waiting to open up or move in?
Exactly.
And so, it's held up in limbo between the state and the county.
Yeah, and we're, we're waiting for a disciplinary result out of the state, and they're dealing with the whole state of Maryland. Good luck.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You had asked, um, if I recall, what Baco's position was on this.
Yeah.
Um, it, on their website, it says that they support it, sent it from seven sixty-two. Their testimony indicates that, um, it's to close a multi-year effort to modernize and streamline the licensure, registration, and oversight of professional electricians in Maryland.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Hastings?
Modernize and streamline.
Thank you for looking that up.
Thank you both for your leadership, I do.
And you're not the only industry, they've done, I mean, they've been doing this for years. I mean, the, um, as, as I listen to your story, I, I've lived and breathed this, and it, I mean, I'm in a different industry, but I've lived and breathed the same exact thing. I mean, we had, uh, ours sort of came from federal to state, but, you know, we have four levels of licensure, but the federal government established four sort of nationwide, but every state did their own thing. And then every state had to try to put theirselves in that box of the federal, and it took years, frankly. You know, we, we operated in an environment for years where states were, every state was doing something different, but the federal said we were supposed to be doing X. It's like the state saying, you're supposed to be doing, they're trying to everybody do the same, at the end of the day, the same thing. Uh, you know, the, you know, the licensing commissions, that's always their goal, is this consistency. Unfortunately, you know, all the counties are doing something sort of different. And you understand the challenge of, but, you know, hopefully we can get the state to, you know, kind of clean up this, clean up this legislation come next session.
I, I know for me, I don't totally not support the bill. I support the way the bill was, I don't support the way the bill went through, and I don't support the fact that there's not, there's, there's no, um, background to it, there's no actual layout of how things are going to work. And the fact that they want to do the bill, they want us to get all the money for it, they want to do all that, but they don't want to do any of the actual legwork of, um, taking care of getting the, the electricians set up or any of that. They actually want us to send them, everybody that we have, and all of their qualifications and do all the paperwork for them, and then them just say, okay, yes or no, whatever. But then, it's, there's, there's just nothing there for us to, to go off of and just worried about, not just my business, but every business, and not being able to pull permits and do work the way they need to do it. And it's just.
Can a individual go through classes, say, at Warwick or a high school and test and become a master electrician without, um, on the job training or working under another master for a period of time?
No, you have to be under a master for, um.
Seven years.
Eleven, seven years?
Seven years, before you can become a master electrician, yes.
It's a long time, isn't it?
It's a long process, yeah.
So, is this, is this, um, like a lot of other things that's sort of happening now? You don't have young people going, I mean, we have trouble getting people to be EMTs. We have people in trouble getting in the fire departments, and these are volunteers.
Robbed those.
Plumbing, plumbers are not coming along. Are we, are we seeing a decline in, um, young people trying to get to be electricians?
Yes, yeah.
So, at some point.
Across the board in trades.
Yeah.
So, where do we go from here?
I think this has been a briefing. Once we figure out the state law, see what happens with that, we will ultimately be back to you for revisions to the county code. We don't know exactly what they will look like at this point.
Okay, and hopefully, we can get more out of, um, the CTE and Warwick to get more electricians because they, they're a good program, so. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next on the agenda, it's something we've talked about quite a bit, um, county council goals for fiscal year 2022. Who wants to start this?
I'll, I'll kind of start, I brought it up, so.
Yes, you did, I was going to say, it's your lead.
Yeah, yeah, I, I created this, so, well, kind of, uh, I know the last session, uh, Ms. Hurley gave us, you know, a handout to kind of set our, set our goals. I know we have several balls up in the air as we always do, but, uh, you know, we had mentioned this some time ago. Yeah, maybe this would be a, uh, a way, we talk about our goals a little bit to see, number one, for, uh, somewhat all on the same page and, and try to wrap ourselves around some of these goals with some, uh, metrics to see how we're progressing and also set some timeframes to try to target to keep us moving toward these goals of. So, uh, you know, I think with that said, uh, you know, we, we can choose how we want to do this. We, whether we want to just kind of go around and see what each one's goals are, if people just speak what their goals are, see how much commonality we have with our goals, uh, you know, and also, you know, this is also attempt to make sure we're following our strategic plan. I know, uh, Councilwoman Ackley has mentioned this, you know, uh, you know, when she was trying to put her goals together, she was paying attention to the strategic plan and.
Right.
Uh, you know, try to get this narrowed down some. So, you know, I'll leave it up to the council to choose if we want to just throw our goals out there individually or how we want to do that.
Would you like to just throw your goals out there and discuss it? And, and something else, um, looking at the handout Ms. Hurley put out, it would be nice if someone could take, um, one of the projects and follow up and see if there's any, um, any work that can be done with the state or federal government such as water and sewer. It's going to be a top one.
Well, and, and I think one of our challenges too, you know, we're, we're the legislative body.
Right.
So, I think there's a lot of goals we'd like to see as a county, but they may not be, you know, our ability to advance them, you know, is, is a question.
Right.
Uh, you know, I mean, you know, how can we advance them legislatively? So, some goals may, uh, you know, but I think that's fine, you know, we can certainly mention goals that may not be something that, uh, we may be able to advance legislatively, but I think it's still important, I mean, it's still going to be coming before us. You know, I think, I think, you know, you mentioned public sewer.
Right.
You know, and I think public sewer is one of those, I mean, you know, I have it as goal one, but, but I'm probably not the only person, you know, I think all seven of us probably, you know, feel public sewer is a, uh, is a high priority. You know, how much of that will be legislative? You know, the, I mean, a lot of that, and primarily that is going to be administrative function advancing that forward. But, you know, uh, but like under the public sewer, I kind of listed under the objectives, you know, I mean, there's, there's several pieces to that, that pie, you know, I mean, what, what's the cost of it? You know, how's it going to be managed? How's it going to be implemented? You know, what's this going to look like? I mean, uh, but, you know, we're expecting to get the study. Hopefully, we'll have the study here in September, which, you know, yeah, right. Which I think, you know, sort of has to be a goal that's communicated to the folks doing that, uh, you know, because, you know, we're, we're already behind the, uh, uh, eight ball on this from a timing standpoint. So, but, you know, and hopefully, you know, once we have that study in our hands in September, is it realistic to think maybe by year end, we can have some kind of plan in place, you know, working with the executive office?
Right, and why I'd like to see it sooner, so we can digest it before then. Mr. Hastings, did you have a comment?
Oh, I guess on that note, that was, my biggest thing is, of course, the issue with further going with DAF tank and then also water and sewer expansion. Uh, and then third item would be anything as far as ag zoning or any kind of zoning when it comes to, uh, solar or anything like that. Those are my issues that I had the most, but above and by, uh, uh, above all else, with, of course, the water, the water and sewer expansion. I don't know how we break up those next steps, and I think that's the real kind of question is, uh, we have to have, in my mind, have to have interaction with expansion with some of, I imagine what the reporter is going to say is that some of the work needs to be done is expansion from current municipalities, in which case, we got to have this coordination and that overlay with those counties as soon as possible. The other part would then be expanding where we can. Uh, I would imagine with, with pla, packaged plants or, or, or whatever that county entity looks like. So, the, I guess, uh, so intermediary steps, I guess, could be, um, you know, anything with regard to getting more information as to what it might look to create a new water and sewer authority. Uh, I don't know if Mako has any resources or anything like that that could be helpful, but, uh, we're certain, like, from what I understand, we're the only county that doesn't have one, uh, so, uh, the more that we can understand of what that process looks like, what that timeline looks like, and then, uh, and then how do we then, and then, and then on, on that note, are there any funding sources that go along with that? Are there any state dollars? I know there are, there's a state water revolving loan fund or a couple other kind of, um, important funds like that. So, if we could find out the, uh, then what immediate sources are available so that we could get revenue in the door as soon as possible in order to, uh, to have us prepared so that we can, uh, uh, start the process and everything. Because, because these last process, we've done these kind of things before, just so it's that, as I say, we, I mean, the, the county as a whole over the last, you know, twenty-five years or more, uh, at least, uh, but we haven't advanced them. And I think the real reasoning why is that we haven't had a, uh, we haven't had those next steps put together in addition to the public understanding that this is what has to happen. I think that's the one difference that we have now is that we have a full understanding that we are not building subdivisions or, or partly large, uh, do it, uh, you know, a large, uh, development on, uh, you know, on any kind of agricultural land, they're not doing that anymore. So, this has to be water or sewer. So, uh, the more that we could get that information, I think as far as the next step, uh, finding out what that authority might look like or what does that look like, and then funding sources to me would be helpful.
Right, and, and that's why I mentioned maybe a councilperson taking a lead on each one of these goals, because if we don't, we're just going to keep talking about it and it's not going to come and approach us. So, we're, we're going to have to have someone reach out. So, um, what were your, all of your goals again?
Uh, the DAF tank.
Again, DAF tank. Again, DAF tank.
Yeah, that's my, my, my main thing would be DAF tank, uh, going for, going forward and then water and sewer expansion.
Okay.
About the code, the adapting, how that's going to look legislatively in our.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Ackley, do you have any?
So I tried to focus on things that, that as a council, we could, um, that we, that could be our goals that didn't necessarily include the executive branch so that we could, we didn't have to rely on another branch to help us with it. And Mr. McCain helped me quite a bit too, but, um, increasing civic engagement. Increase civic, civic engagement to, um, provide them with access to digital information. Increase opportunity for public input, um, increase diversity on our county boards and commissions. The measures I have was to increase wifi, which is under my broadband. Um, establishing a social media presence, establish listing sessions and town halls, either virtually or in person. Um, and kind of making that a, a goal, a numbers goal to have four town halls, listing sessions a year or one a quarter. And then have, um, let's see if I have for civic engagement. And then I had increasing wifi connectivity and broadband in underserved communities.
Okay, Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, um, and, and to reiterate what Councilman McCain said, um, even though we are the legislative branch, a lot of what we can do, even if it's a legislative issue, is to hold work sessions to make sure that our responsibility is to make sure that initiatives go through that are important to the county as a whole. Again, wastewater treatment authority is, is a high priority, broadband is. I think we need to focus on the health department as to how we're going to address the oversight on economic, on, um, environmental health. That's a high priority and we've seen this, uh, for years now. And I think there's some, some hope to get that done. Our volunteer fire departments, we've got to create some type of recruitment incentives. They're looking to us for that type of leadership. We know we're going to have the fire service agreement coming up that we're going to have to, you know, be focused on. I'd like to see, and this is something also through the executive branch, our enterprise accounts sort of just fell through the floor during COVID. I think it's, uh, it's, it's beholden upon us and, uh, and to work with the executive to try to bring these enterprise accounts back up so they're self-sustaining. Because we've been, we've been funding and funding and funding until the COVID money came in. The council was helping to subsidize all the enterprise accounts. Of course, there's, um, economic development as a whole, whether or not we, you know, try to figure out a way that the, we can do better branding of the county. We have education where I think the two highest priorities aside from Kerwin and Pre-K and all that is we really need to focus, you know, more on the CTE programs and trying to work with the Board of Education to see how we can create incentives or, uh, expanding the CTE programs. Would you saw example of that today with the, uh, the electrical board, um, and public-private partnerships. I just really think that we have to try to, to push that initiative. I'd like to see, uh, see the council choose as a serious goal to eliminate the dispensary. You know, a few months ago, this council didn't seem to have that, uh, that interest. Uh, but I think, you know, I would think that we would always be concerned about allowing government to compete in the private enterprise, you know, business. And I think we need to reevaluate ourselves as far as what we're doing and what, who we represent. Because the dispensary truly is competing with free enterprise system. Outside of that, uh, the law department, do we reorganize it? Or do we still, uh, and put it back in the, um, as a department head? Or do we leave it on a contract basis? Uh, because the council has oversight on the county attorney as does the executive. So that is really a, a priority. Outside of that, the only other thing is, uh, what was mentioned in solar panels and, um, stormwater management was an issue when it was flooding. It's not flooding now, but we might have to make sure that Public Works is getting back to that.
It'll probably come back.
Dallas Baker did an excellent job in putting some type of a program together, uh, but he's gone and, uh, I think we need to pick it back up again.
Mr. Cannon, um, Mr. County is rebranding. Is that, uh, what you were thinking?
Well, you know, I mean, it's always good to try to, I think, to be conscious of your branding. I think you saw the city of Salisbury has rebranded. Uh, I think they've done an excellent job in, in how they've been branding. I have no idea that the mechanics behind it, you know, what, you know, what companies they may have hired to help them with that type. But I think it, it wouldn't hurt, Dorchester County did it with a water theme.
Yeah.
Now, whether that actually brings in more economic development, I couldn't say. But, um, that's really what I was referencing to, how we might make it more appealing for people to want to come here. And especially for businesses to want to come here. So we're either rebranding through Salisbury Comico Economic Development, trying to figure out what, what we should do. You know, talking to, um, commercial realtors, Spirit Van Ness or any of those agencies and saying, hey, what are we missing in this county that isn't appealing to these major corporations that might be able to come here?
Right, you know, I think a lot of entities tie into it.
Sure.
Mr. McCain?
No, but, you know, that, that's a big deal, you know, I mean, every municipality needs, they need to know what its identity is. You know, and, and having that identity, something, something you're known for is a big factor in attracting everything from just people moving here to businesses coming. And, yeah, so, you know, that's kind of labeled in the branding, but that's a very typical scenario for any municipality is right, try to, you know, I always, you know, say, for example, like in White Comico County, I mean, our recreational opportunities are unparalleled. You know, our sports, uh, uh, venues we have with.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, with, you know, like our Henry Parker Sports Complex, I mean, that's, that's unmatched up and down the East Coast.
That softball going on down there?
Yeah, the number of fields we have there and, and the unique thing about that complex, uh, and people will say this all the time when they come, like right now with the girls softball tournament. But what, the, the main thing they always comment on, it's wooded. See, sports complexes aren't wooded, you know, I mean, if you have children, you've been to other sports complexes. You know, normally it's a white, you know, because the fields, you know, they have to be in the open. Uh, but, you know, we actually crafted a sports complex in, in a wooded environment. But what's so big about that is people get, they're in the shade, they're, you know, the, the parents and fans don't have to sit out in the broiling sun for, you know, a 10-hour all-day tournament, uh, but anyhow, you know, but we have, uh, that along with our other parks we have, but then with our natural resources and Seagull Century and, you know, the number of, uh, running events we have here, cycling, I mean, you know, that, that's a big part of our community, but we don't necessarily, I don't feel if we really identify that enough with ourselves, you know, that sets us apart from other counties can't match what we do with that. I'm just using that as an example, but.
And we've got room to expand, uh, with our sports venues too. All right, um, so are there anything else that you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, yeah, my goals, well, as I mentioned earlier, the, you know, my first goal was the, uh, uh, public sewer. And we, you know, we've mentioned that, solar's been mentioned, I had that down as my second goal, you know, was, you know, solar specific section in our zoning code. We've had some work sessions on that, but, you know, see if we can't start targeting to get that completed. Uh, you know, laugh session, we talked about the, uh, DAF being, uh, implemented into our zoning code. That was also previously mentioned as well as, uh, broadband, you know, and I think that whole issue of broadband and connectivity is, you know, from a cost standpoint with the funds that are out there right now, you know, we have a lot of moving parts to that, uh, but, you know, I, I think, uh, via the rural broadband and some of the other opportunities, uh, that may not, you know, hopefully, you know, that minimizes the cost to the county. And, you know, and actually I put a fifth goal on here, it's kind of a goal slash topic that probably isn't on most people's list and I kind of put it on as a late thought. But in, ironically, it parallels a lot of things we've heard today. But I put on here actually recognition of the county's revenue slash limit, limitations in an inflationary environment. You know, we're in the current environment where we're seeing significant increases in lots of things. You know, you heard just today on the Cove Road project, you know, that's doubled. You know, you know, we all know what's happening with, you know, we've seen what's happened with lumber prices. Uh, you know, healthcare costs can go up 25, 30% in a year. But, you know, we have limit, you know, we got Kerwin coming, you know, that was, you know, John mentioned education. You know, we recently just approved the collective bargaining agreement with our public safety officials. Uh, you know, we're going to rebuild a, you know, a new facility. You know, these are significant costs that are, uh, significant expenses that we're getting ready to incur as a county. But at the same time, we have significant revenue limitations, you know, and, you know, how do we address that, you know, particularly in an inflationary environment? That is a, that is a major, major challenge that we need to anticipate. And not just all of a sudden, next year when budget comes around, we're like, ooh, you know, like we were surprised by that.
Occurrence definitely going to be an unknown coming up.
So you're saying we're going to have some, um, financial issues in the future?
Yes.
All right, um, Mr. Davis, do you have any?
Yeah, of course, with the public sewer, everyone's on that. Um, I think along with the, we're spending, we're, we're trying to spend millions and millions of dollars in the airport. With the improvement of the airport and, um, that's when we, I think, we as a county, we need to promote our county. We don't do a good job of promoting what we got. I mean, we're gonna, I think we got the second largest airport and with the improvements coming, we got a major highway to go north and south.
East and west.
In east and west. Um, we don't do a good job of promoting, not only our county, but our employees. I think over the past four years, we lost like 30 essential employees. And if you go to Worcester Somerset, you'll find them. I think we're not taking care of our own. And I think if we don't take care of our own, that's why we're, I mean, if we're going to function as a county government, we got to have all positions filled. And as you know, we don't have some of the top positions with, right here in the county right now that aren't filled and that haven't been filled for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And so how can you operate a government when all your positions aren't filled and you're losing them? Essential people to other counties for whatever reasons.
And that's one thing I, I mentioned too.
That's one thing, yeah.
I mentioned.
We got to pay them. If you don't pay them, you're not going to stay.
I, I mentioned that to Mr. Bissota, if pay is an issue, come back and talk to us.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, as a council, I've been on here what, seven years and we all, we encouraged some of these department heads to come in, but I think they were told not to come and promote their people. I mean, look at, we got this, the largest county jail on the shore with the lowest pay. And I think county roads, you, you talk about the flood issue, what, where it's not flooding because of the roads and ditches. I think they're short like 20-some men to have hired anybody. And again, we don't have a director out there, no, no direction out there. And that's been going on for how many years? And, you know, I think if we start taking care of our own and then we can show what, what the county itself is doing, then we can attract other things. And again, uh, one of the other things I say, think we, we really going to have to look at is EMS. I mean, these, these volunteer fire companies aren't going to be able to afford these, this, the cost to operate these ambulance services. And the county's going to have to step in and, um, help them with funding, either funding or get together, come up with a county plan or county-owned or whatever. But we're going to have to step in and do something with this, we're firing EMS real soon because, I mean, you see it, Joe, I mean, Joe mentioned a while ago that we can't get volunteer firemen to volunteer no more. And it's not because of funding, well, it is because.
There's a lot of reasons, well.
Yeah, but a lot of it is funding, I mean.
Right.
The cost of equipment and everything, I mean, just to run the ambulance services alone. And I think we're going to have to step in and, and take a big part of that. And then again, my last thing is Warwick, we just talked about the electrician, electrical board and everything. And I think Warwick is one of the lowest funded community colleges in the state.
The lowest.
The lowest. And, uh, I think we need to step the funding up for Warwick to improve that, like, if we're going to get the improvement out to the airport with the jobs coming in. And then, you know, one thing we didn't mention was the, um, the wind, that wind thing. I saw a promotion on the other day where they're pushing that thing. And if they're going to bring that, that's going to come to fruition, we're going to need Warwick to be able to support them with the jobs and so forth, so.
The wind farm?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, and you mentioned promoting the county, that kind of ties into, um, branding or rebranding.
Yeah, we, we tried at one time with the previous administrator, we gave him about $185,000.
Yeah.
And we, we got billboards put up within the county, so.
So hit 300 and some, I think.
Yeah.
Was it 300 or something?
Again, had an officer that, that sat vacant.
Yeah, so Joe, um, you got some ideas?
Well, I can ditto most, most everything everybody said.
Right.
I can ditto most everything everybody said. You know, I guess, um, I, I always tend to fire, fire department meetings and I know that they're, um, they're having their issues with, um, volunteerism and retention. So I think that's something that should be on the list. I'm not going to put anything on a high priority list, but one thing, and I'll get to that in a minute. Wifi broadband, you know, that's something, that's something that's, you know, the private sector is going to basically try to take care of itself, take care of, you know, and because there's a need there. So they're going to work through it and, um, what we got to do is just support them and encourage them, I guess. That's a good way to put it. Water and sewer, of course, you know, that's something that's, um, high on our list that we need to really, you know, we really need to stay on top of. And, and I've seen something, was it, was it about the water? Was that email about the water and sewer when the question was asked and the executive said it was an executive initiative? Was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't understand that response because it's been the council's initiative for a long, long time and we've been trying to work with the executive on that and, um, so.
Well, the question I had, what was the definition of executive initiative?
Well, anyway, I mean, I think it should be a collaborative effort. I don't know why, why that.
Did you ever get a definition for that?
I didn't ask.
Okay.
Okay, the, the main thing, we talk about, and I know this is something that has to come along from the executive's department, is our infrastructure. And I'm going to be presenting to the county executive within, within the next couple of weeks, a list of roads that are, I can go from, if you want to do a scale of one to 10, that there's a few number ones out there that really need, um, really need fixing. I think some of you folks were on Shabox Road last night and there's a, there's a big sunken place right there just before you get to the driveway that if you don't slow down to about 30 miles an hour, it'd knock the tires off your car. And I have complaints, um, within my district and out of my district. Um, I was, um, in a neighborhood completely out of my district the other night and I could not believe that that was a county road.
Is it my district?
Pardon me?
Is it my district?
No, it happened to be Larry's district.
So it's all over.
But anyway, um, you know, apparently from just talking to different people, our roads budget got cut at like $10 million, we're $10 million from where we were 10 years ago. We're down. Paving, um, paving, slurry seal, tar and chip has doubled and tripled in price. We don't have the employees in county roads to get things ready to fix like we should do. And of course, we go back to money, what Bill just said a few minutes ago, it all, that, that we maybe not had the funding. We're going to be, um, doing the budget and all this money's got to be spread out. So the roads, infrastructure, you know, our fire departments travel down these roads. Our EMS, our ambulances travel down these roads. Um, our commercial vehicles travel down them and, and people complain about that a little bit. But look, if it didn't come on a truck, you wouldn't get it. Everything we get comes on a truck. So the people that complain about trucks, um, better look in their, in their cupboard and, um, and in their refrigerator and see where their food's coming from. So that's going to be one of the things that I'm, I'm going to really, um, make an issue of in the next, um, within the next year that we need to do. I think I said water and sewer, you know, education, um, I don't know if anybody up here mentioned education. We know they do, they, they do their, um, they do their own thing out there. We give them the money and they do what they want to do with it pretty much. But I, um, but we, we're the ones that, um, catch grief when they don't do something right. So I think a better working relationship with the Board of Ed, um, would be, um, something on a list. And, and for people that's watching this on TV, what we're talking about is just goals and things we'd like to address within the next year, um, so.
Right.
I'd like to say I ditto pretty much everything everybody else said, everybody had good ideas, but thank you.
And I, I agree with you, Joe, um, by the time it gets to us, they've already mentioned, but, um, we can expand on some things, like again, water and sewer and broadband are two of the top ones. And I have schools on my list, the CTE, we mentioned, um, the, um, electrical board, the electricians and the, um, plumbers. It's very important and I'd like to see them. the electricians and the plumbers, it's very important, and I'd like to see them, I guess, advance school sports and the middle schools, I've been pushing this for 10 years, I guess, I think it's a great starting ground and it keeps the kids busy, and a lot of schools around the, the nation start their sports in middle schools, so public safety's on my list, whether it's fire, EMS, or the Sheriff's Department, whatever we can do to assist them. And back to schools, I really think that somebody on the council should be like a liaison to the school board and to the teachers' association.
I will, I will put you in that position really quick, as Vice President, I'll take that stand to put Larry in charge of that.
I'm on mine, I was on the board for five years and I enjoy working with those people. Rebranding, like we mentioned already, the Department of Corrections, we kind of touched on that, but we really do need to discuss that in more detail because there was a point there when a lot of the employees were contacting us all the time for different issues and pay. We haven't heard from them much lately, but I'd like to get back on top of that. Roads, got an email yesterday about the roads being dirty in certain areas, and Joe and I always talk about that when we meet with the acting county executive, so that is really an issue. And like, we talked about the beaches today and parks wrecks and it's expanding on the sports is something that I really like to see us do, like Mr. McCain mentioned, we have a lot there, but we don't market ourselves on that, and I really think we can expand. My, my boy played on a travel soccer team, we went to Hershey Park, and there was a soccer tournament there and there were 800 teams, that's significant for a small area, and I really think we can do that. We do have fields around here, we'd have to work things out with the, the schools, and I'm sure they would allow us to use some of the fields, but the one, the field, first fields that we went to, it was a middle school, had eight soccer fields, most of our fields, our schools only have one field. So with that said, I would like each council member to pick at least one of their goals and stick with that and report back to us in future meetings, is everybody agreeable to that?
I'm happy to do public sewer and solar, but I think public sewer might need a couple of us.
Right.
About solar and public sewer.
That's a big nut. Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll interconnect them, but.
That's what Pittsfield is.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I agree with you, I was thinking we probably need co-leaders on some of these because they're going to be so broad and expansive, so, Mr. Davis, anything that you would like to lead on and report back to us?
I talked to the firemen, see what they, you know, what we can come up and help them guys out.
Okay, Joe?
I'm not going to choose just one, Larry, I mean.
I know, I know, but for right now.
I've got a pretty short list anyway, you know.
I think education, I think that that would be.
That's a good one for you.
No, it's not.
So you're more than welcome to stay on top of everything, but I would like everybody to pick at least one thing and come back and report.
Okay, I'll, I'll report, my, my report to the executive's office on the road conditions that I'm going to submit in the next few days, but I'm also, like I say, the fire, you know, I have my other list.
Right, and, and I'm pro-firing EMS too, and I was going to ask you when you were talking about roads, I, I really enjoyed that trip that you set up for us before, I don't know if you'd be interested in doing that again.
Possibly could, for sure.
I would love to do that again, Ms. Ackley.
I can do, I mean, if everyone's on board with increasing civic engagement, if they think that that should be a priority, if that should be a goal for us, no one else really mentioned it, so I didn't, nobody else thought that was.
That's fine, Mr. Hazens?
Well, I was, did you want me to pick one or two?
One.
Okay.
You can do, as many as you want, but I'd like you to report on at least one, Mr. Hazens?
Yeah, I could do, as far as, I don't know if anyone else was already looking at that, but what I mentioned earlier was the, the authority, the structure for water and sewer.
Yeah.
You know, I could, I could do some extra research there, and then same thing with funding sources, if that were helpful. I know Mr. McCain was already leading on that and I don't, I was thinking of specific actions I can do to be helpful, if that were helpful, I'll be glad to do that, and.
Funding for water and sewer?
Yeah, and then actually the resources there, what's available, and then the other part of that would be the, the authority or structure, if there's anything we should, any data we could have or information we got there, and I'll be glad.
We can just communicate on that.
Yeah, I'll back up Ms. Ackley too on, I think on.
Civic engagement.
Civic engagement.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, I wouldn't mind seeing the council do, and we don't have to do it all the time or not everybody has to participate, but I do like the idea of doing more town halls. Mr. Cannon?
I would, I'd be glad to do health, the Health Department, trying to get the health, environmental health oversight, yeah.
Would that include the sewer projects?
That's primarily focused on environmental health.
Okay.
Techniques.
All right. I, I was nominated for the schools and CTE and sports, I will, I will do that one and report back, and I'll also help out with the water and sewer since I attended several seminars on that and got some contact information, so we all can do that jointly, but whatever you bring back to the table would be perfect, and if you've got any ideas for doing a work session with any of these, let us know, we'll set that up.
No one picked broadband.
I, I saw that, nobody picked broadband.
So I can take two, I mean, I could take civic engagement and broadband.
Well, you've got it, thank you. All right, any more discussion on that?
When do we normally meet with the state folks, the state delegation, because I, I know that normally was in December or something?
Once a year.
Yeah, normally it's in December.
I was thinking, wondering if there's a way that we could, maybe we could even move that up, but, you know, some of these issues, you know, Vice President Holloway mentioned the, the roads, that kind of, you know, that, that's a, that's a, that's an issue that obviously, you know, no, fewer people were driving last year and we saw the, you know, the, the larger gas tax and these other kinds of taxes that are out there, so I think some of our issues go up to the state too, and I think the more, or the sooner we can make it more aware for them, I think the, the better that they could be advocates, or, or we as a body could be more, advocate more, I guess, in that.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
And we can do that as part of a council meeting instead of, I know we always do that breakfast, I think every year we do, always do it the Saturday after Thanksgiving, that's a terrible, that's a terrible time to do that.
Yeah, we can always bring them into a council meeting.
Right, have them into a council, yeah, right, that's a terrible time.
We can ask them to come sooner if, which I think that's what.
And do it, and do it in here instead.
So I think it's a great idea.
Get rid of that Saturday.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, time to go into closed work session, need a motion.
So.
On a favor?
Second.
By Mr. Holloway.